We'll now call the meeting to order and ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We also need a motion to approve the minutes of the March 10th, 2016 regular meeting, the March 15th, 2016 recess meeting, the March 19th, 2016 recess meeting, and the March 23rd, 2016 recess meeting. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Please.
Any discussion? Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Recognition, Ms. Jesse?
As you see before you, you can see some artwork that has been submitted for the DSBA art contest, which will be taking place next week, next Thursday, at Galax High School. And I'd like to congratulate the following winners. And my left, your right, over here, the elementary school winner is Rebecca Hibbits of Flatwoods Elementary. The photograph... The photograph that you see on the stage is the middle school winner, and that is Darren Eary from Jonesville Middle School. And the high school division winner is Hunter Coe, who is a student at Thomas Walker High School. And all of this artwork will also be on display at Kaleidoscope tomorrow evening.
Next, we have the KTM drawing cards and write-on, Ms. Jesse.
I'd like to congratulate the students who had their artwork published in the drawing cards section, session, yeah, of the Kingsport Times newspaper. The students are Darcy Robbins, Emily Laster, Abby Capton, Keaton Smith, Ethan Grizzle, and Dylan Mosley. And all these students are from Elkhornob Elementary School, and we offer their congratulations to them. They will be receiving a certificate. And to the following students for their articles being published in the write-on section, again, of the Kingsport Times News. Autumn Fultz, Dylan Fannin, Alicia Grizzle, December Stepper, and Jacob Davis. And again, these students will also be receiving a certificate to acknowledge their accomplishments.
Next, we have the P.D. Middle School.
Pennington Middle School had their FFA, their future farmers, had a couple of winners. Their livestock judging team placed second out of 13 teams at the Appalachian area contest. They were only one point away from first class. So, try a little bit harder next year, boys. The livestock team members are Robbie Burchett, and are any of the, I think, a couple of the young men are here tonight. If I call your name, please, why don't you stand? Robbie Burchett, Austin Harless, Hunter Parky, and Colby Reed. I'd also like to congratulate Robbie Burchett for winning the county junior division tractor driving contest. And Robbie also placed the second highest in the individual of the livestock judging contest. Again, congratulations.
Next, we have the John Fox Junior Riding Contest.
Yes, I would like to introduce some wonderful riders. We have Savannah Leonard and Brooke Bailey. These young people swept first, second, and third place in the middle school division. Fifth graders competing against eighth graders in the John Fox. We're very proud of them.
Next, we have the schools with highest percentage of attendance. It looks like for Mar, for the last month, if I'm reading this correctly, that Elydale had the highest, 95.3, and Jonesville came in at 94.9. Congratulations to those schools. Next on the agenda is public expression. I remind anybody that wants to speak, you've got five minutes. Please be courteous to not use names or defame anybody or anything like that. So, with that said, please feel free to come out and speak.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Beth Davies, and I've lived in the St. Charles area since, well, it's 44 years now. I'm so old. But I just, I wanted to address myself to, I'm glad to see it on the agenda. But it's my understanding that Lee County, after being chosen by the Virginia Department of Education to be the recipient of two food grants, Project 365 and Child and Adult Care Food Program, rejected the grants. As a citizen of Lee County, I was unaware of any public discussion regarding these grants. In fact, I understand also that two letters were sent from Lee County to the Department of Education rejecting the grants. It is indeed encouraging to see that the two food programs are on tonight's agenda so that the board members can address the programs publicly. I want to express my strong support for the acceptance of these grants. If any county would benefit from these programs, it's Lee County with over 71% of the county students eligible for free or reduced-priced meals. Every bit of research demonstrates the invaluable benefits to the children. Lee County, now designated as a distressed county by the Appalachian Regional Commission, would receive over $1,131,000 just for the two programs being considered by the board members tonight. After many years in education, both as a teacher and as an administrator, I am acutely aware of the nutrition needs of at-risk students and the tremendous difference it makes in student performance when students have enough food to satisfy their needs. Teachers themselves found the learning environment very much improved, and as a result, became stronger advocates of the program. Programs like these work best when they are fully utilized and not optional. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jacqueline Hanrahan, and I live in Coburn, Virginia, and work across the Coalfield communities with an office in Pennington. I've taught at Hurley High in Buchanan County, and I'm familiar with the many demands on teachers, boards, and parents. Hunger is an enemy of education. Hunger also undermines the economic development and health of a community. I speak here tonight as a longtime executive board member of Family Crisis Support Services, located in Norton, Virginia, but which works in the Coalfield region, actually all the way up to Withville. We also provide, besides homelessness and domestic violence assistance, we also provide food assistance. And we have many calls for food assistance from Lee County. Therefore, I strongly support and encourage this school board and the Lee County citizens to take full advantage of what would be close to almost $2 million to the eight county schools, of which $1,131,000 would be available to Lehigh and Dryden. We all know that living in what we are now calling far southwest Virginia, marginal to our state leadership and government, requires us to take initiative and work cooperatively with others in the region to make the grant dollars grow. At Family Crisis, we work with many groups for grants and donations to meet the region's needs. These grants to Lee County, which are available to the schools, will mean more help for the region's hunger crisis, of which we're speaking in our country of one in six people being hungry. Experience is a good teaching. Success is an even better one. Best would be that by availing itself of close to $2 million in funds to address hunger, our young people and families can achieve even more than what we recognize here tonight. It will also directly go into the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Suella Kobek. I'm sorry, my voice has some problems. I'm an attorney. I raised my family here. My husband is Dr. Van Zee, who works at the Community Health Clinic at St. Charles. He would be here tonight, except he's at the annual American Association of Addiction Medicine Conference in Baltimore, Maryland. He directed me and to convey to you the importance. He has worked at the clinic for over 40 years, and he feels, and I worked with many, many special needs children in this county. Forty percent of my work as an attorney for over 35 years was with special needs kids. I worked with a lot of other children in the county. So, I know well, and my husband knows well, the tremendous need for good nutrition, for a healthy lifestyle for our children so that they can get the benefits that the education you are working so hard to provide to move forward for their future. We strongly, strongly support acceptance of these grants. And in fact, I don't think any of you had arrived to write a letter saying that you refused it without board action. So, any letter that's been written, I certainly would object to and would certainly question because this is a policy issue, and I have concerns about that. I don't know that that's the law, but it certainly raises a question that you would just out of hand, without community input, refuse something like this. And I can imagine how, what a boon economically it is to everyone, every family who would receive the benefit of this. I know what it costs to buy groceries for my husband and I. I know what it costs to buy groceries for my children and I, and I know what it costs to buy groceries for my children and their friends. It's, it's a lot of money, and to be able to relieve, provide some economic relief is a second incentive. And I hope that, and since we are one of the 10 top poorest counties in the country, not just in the state, in the country, this is something that you all, as responsible officials, need to seriously take into consideration and take serious information from the people who supported you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica Markbarin Blair, and this is actually from some other, in one of these meetings. Listening to the discussion at hand, I would like to say that, you know, I have spent time in my churches, working with my community, volunteering to help these families that they speak of in need. I know what it's like to be poor, and I know what it's like to be rich, okay? These children that go to these schools, they are hurting, and they need these grants. I drove my little car until it couldn't drive no more to take little lunch bags to these children in need that we speak up for in churches. If there is a way for these grants to go through, I hope and plan with everything you may that they can. Because no matter what adults are doing, it's the children that suffer, and it takes a community to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jill Carson, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I want to say thank you to everyone who got up and spoke to this issue. I spent this whole day at UVA Lise at the ARC conference about funding for communities in the Coalfields. And Lee County was mentioned specifically as the one county with the designation of being a distressed community. I hate hearing that, but it's something that we have to face, and we should all, in any way that we can, do what we need to do to turn that around and to change it. There are many families out there that are in need. I worked for Head Start for 10 years, and it was that experience that woke me up to the needs of the people in our community. I cannot imagine us turning our backs on people who are in need. Yes, it might mean that we may have to do, work a little harder, somebody may have to work a little harder. There are people in this community, I know for fact, who are willing to help out if need be. But I cannot see us turning our backs on a $2 million program that would feed the children and the families of Lee County. So, I ask that you all do the right thing. I want you to see that it is on the agenda, and that you do the right thing and accept those grants. Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll move on to reports. First, we have Kaleidoscope. Ms. Jesse?
Yes, and I believe this is the 26th year for Kaleidoscope, the showcase of talent for the Lee County students, which will feature art. Again, example of that tonight, forensics, music, and choral performances. Thomas Walker Forensics will begin the program at 5:00. The elementary music program will be at 5:30. The middle school bands will perform at 6:30. The Lehigh Band at 7:00. The middle school chorus at 8:00, and the high school chorus at 8:30. And if you do want to see Thomas Walker's forensics, you better get there prior to because I believe they shut the door because I tried to see them last year, and I couldn't get in. So, you better get there early. It never ceases to amaze me, the talent that our students can display. So, I urge you to attend.
Next is the 5K Run Walk for Autism. Ms. Jesse?
Okay, the third annual Lee County Walk for Autism will be this Saturday, April 16th, in Jonesville. Their goal is to earn money to purchase sensory chairs for children diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. The race will begin at 10:00 with registration at 9:30, or 9:00 at Jonesville Middle School, and the register, and the cost is $20, which includes a t-shirt. And the Lee County Walk for Autism is a nonprofit group which wants to increase overall autism awareness. Autism affects all people. A child is diagnosed every 20 minutes, and while there is no cure, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, it is often possible for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And April is autism awareness month.
Next is update on Every Student Succeeds Act. Ms. Jesse?
I know you and Tipler have asked several times about this. I did attend a conference last week that talked about that. I'm sure you all can read the information there, but I will, for the sake of the audience, point out a couple of things, and for those that might be interested, I do have some extra handouts for you. But under the Every Student Succeeds Act, it requires the use of multiple measures of student success in elementary, middle, and high school. While continuing to require annual tests in grades three through eight and once in a high school, the new bill eliminates the rigid system of adequate yearly progress aimed at 100% proficiency in deference to state-defined goals. The bill also allows districts to use another nationally-recognized assessment in high school instead of state-standardized tests. It will allow states to set a cap limiting the time students spend taking annual tests. In fact, Maryland passed a bill that limits their testing to 2%. It recognizes that the one-size-fits-all approach does not work and calls for committees of practitioners, including educators, parents, and community constituents, to work together to improve their local schools. And it prohibits the federal government from mandating teacher evaluations or defining teacher effectiveness.
Thank you. Next, we have enrollment. And as I read it, the enrollment for this month, well, actually, this is for February, 3,067 students, which is actually an increase of five students from last month. So, that's unusual. I think we've been losing about every month. Next, we have Early Retirement Incentive Plan. Ms. Lambert?
At this time, I just want to give a little clarification to our Early Retirement Incentive Plan that has been offered for this year. Some employees who are interested in taking the early retirement have asked if they might be allowed to work past July 1 because of their VRS anniversary date, depending on when they were hired in the past. You can be penalized quite a bit if you don't meet that anniversary date, and so just want the board to consider that and maybe give me a consensus on what you feel we can do with that.
Next is update on the school budget.
Yes, Budget Committee met earlier this week. At this point, we are working on a step increase for all employees. We are looking at options to increase the amount the board pays for health insurance. And after the governor's veto session, we will have a meeting with the Board of Supervisors' Budget Committee, once we know whether he vetoes or changes anything in the legislation for the budget.
And next, this is financial. Ms. Lambert?
All right, this is a summary of our financial activity for the month of March. We received revenues totaling $3,47,632.75. As of March 31st, we have received 61.13% of our estimated revenues for the year. At the same time last year, we had received 62.64%. Our expenditures for the month of March totaled $3,114,766.67. We had used 56.17% of our appropriations as of March 31st, and at the same time last year, 58.29%. And that's all I have, unless anyone has questions?
I say thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move to our action items, and the first thing is consider approval of the Lee County Career and Technical Center Annual Plan for 2016, 2017. That's included in our packet, and I hope everybody's had a chance to look over it. Certainly, it's a plan derived out of having cooperation and collaboration between both education and industry, and teachers, parents, and students. And so, I think it's a good plan that's been put together, and I would ask that we have a motion to accept that plan.
Show them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose? All right, clear the vote. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Markbarin Blair, and this is actually from some other, in one of these meetings. Listening to the discussion at hand, I would like to say that, you know, I have spent time in my churches, working with my community, volunteering to help these families that they speak of in need. I know what it's like to be poor, and I know what it's like to be rich, okay? These children that go to these schools, they are hurting, and they need these grants. I drove my little car until it couldn't drive no more to take little lunch bags to these children in need that we speak up for in churches. If there is a way for these grants to go through, I hope and plan with everything you may that they can. Because no matter what adults are doing, it's the children that suffer, and it takes a community to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jill Carson, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I want to say thank you to everyone who got up and spoke to this issue. I spent this whole day at UVA Lise at the ARC conference about funding for communities in the Coalfields. And Lee County was mentioned specifically as the one county with the designation of being a distressed community. I hate hearing that, but it's something that we have to face, and we should all, in any way that we can, do what we need to do to turn that around and to change it. There are many families out there that are in need. I worked for Head Start for 10 years, and it was that experience that woke me up to the needs of the people in our community. I cannot imagine us turning our backs on people who are in need. Yes, it might mean that we may have to do, work a little harder, somebody may have to work a little harder. There are people in this community, I know for fact, who are willing to help out if need be. But I cannot see us turning our backs on a $2 million program that would feed the children and the families of Lee County. So, I ask that you all do the right thing. I want you to see that it is on the agenda, and that you do the right thing and accept those grants. Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll move on to reports. First, we have Kaleidoscope. Ms. Jesse?
Yes, and I believe this is the 26th year for Kaleidoscope, the showcase of talent for the Lee County students, which will feature art. Again, example of that tonight, forensics, music, and choral performances. Thomas Walker Forensics will begin the program at 5:00. The elementary music program will be at 5:30. The middle school bands will perform at 6:30. The Lehigh Band at 7:00. The middle school chorus at 8:00, and the high school chorus at 8:30. And if you do want to see Thomas Walker's forensics, you better get there prior to because I believe they shut the door because I tried to see them last year, and I couldn't get in. So, you better get there early. It never ceases to amaze me, the talent that our students can display. So, I urge you to attend.
Next is the 5K Run Walk for Autism. Ms. Jesse?
Okay, the third annual Lee County Walk for Autism will be this Saturday, April 16th, in Jonesville. Their goal is to earn money to purchase sensory chairs for children diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. The race will begin at 10:00 with registration at 9:30, or 9:00 at Jonesville Middle School, and the register, and the cost is $20, which includes a t-shirt. And the Lee County Walk for Autism is a nonprofit group which wants to increase overall autism awareness. Autism affects all people. A child is diagnosed every 20 minutes, and while there is no cure, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, it is often possible for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And April is autism awareness month.
Next is update on Every Student Succeeds Act. Ms. Jesse?
I know you and Tipler have asked several times about this. I did attend a conference last week that talked about that. I'm sure you all can read the information there, but I will, for the sake of the audience,
Next, we had had a proposal in the past that we've just been talking about, about reclassification. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry. Can I get a letter stating that because the last letter I sent to the O.A. that was written? So can I get something from Dr. Adams that she's acting superintendent to send that to the O.A.?
I think you were skipping down to the next item on the agenda. And that is about the RFP.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I move that the Lee County School Board advertise a request for proposal for a premium-only plan and a flexible spending account for health savings and dependent childcare with a deadline of May 6th for the proposals to be back.
Okay, that's a motion?
That's a motion. I move.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose?
Just let me make one more comment. Just because we're doing the RFP doesn't mean we have to accept.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Next, we have the consideration of a reclassification of 5th grade children and students to the middle schools. And the reason that this was brought up was the fact that both Elk Knob and Flatwoods Elementary Schools are very overcrowded and there was some excess room in the middle schools, which the numbers are a lot lower. And it's been talked about a lot. I think it's been talked about in the community and amongst teachers and principals and whatever. And so that's on the agenda tonight. So do we have a motion to reclassify the 5th grade from elementary to middle schools?
I'd like to make a motion to table this till next month.
Okay.
Do you think that'd give enough time to move and for these kids to be able to make their schedules?
It'll cut it short, I believe we can do. I have confidence in the faculties and staff of the schools.
Do we have a second to table?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Next, it is passed. Next, consider approval of the SBA policy updates. Ms. Adams.
Okay, I have worked with the policies and met with Mrs. Jessie prior to this meeting. And there are some policies that have contradictions and I believe she's going to speak to those and to the ones that she's recommending that we adopt tonight.
I recommend that we go ahead and adopt the first policy, BBFA. The only change there was needing to make a choice, which really wasn't a choice because we don't have a city or town attorney. So it basically was the county attorney to fill in the blank. And the other changes were simply like code changes. The next one is CLA, the Reporting of Filaments Act. Again, it's just an update of some of the other acts. The GCBE, Family and Medical League. Just again, legal reference and cross-reference is updated. And IIAA, the textbook selection. Now-
Who was that?
The textbook selection. Now, in that one, some procedures will have to be developed. But what essentially happened here is what happened under locally policy is now all policies for all textbooks. So as I say, I think we can go ahead and pass this policy to add the procedures later. The other is IKH, the retaking of SOL assessment, just legal reference updates. JBA, same thing, legal updates. I think we will need to look at the student suspension and expulsion policy with some changes there. We had been doing option two, but with the changes made, I think we need to maybe look at that a little bit more and make the decision by our- And I believe in JHCH, about the only thing besides the updating policy was to determine how many and the regulation is that the students be allowed, not all the students, but on the whole, the school system be allowed to have 30 fundraisers that involve food items.
That per school?
No, that's for school.
Per school.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the SBA policy update?
I make the motion that we approve the policy update, the February policy update excluding policy IKF, IKFD, JGD slash JGE, and JGD slash JGE dash R.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Next, we need to consider approval of the overnight field trip. Do we have a motion to approve of?
Make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Next, we have a motion to consider approval of second, or hopefully have a motion to consider approval of second semester field trips. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Next, it's calling Ms. Lambert to consider approval to renew our insurance coverage for 2016, 2017 school year. This is all policies itself for health insurance. Ms. Lambert.
Yes. I'll be as brief on this as I can. We advertised for proposals and did not receive any from anyone but our Baycore renewal where we currently have insurance. They presented us with three options and all that information is in your packet. The first option was the least expensive but keeps our coverage the same as last year. The difference in price from last year is $21,593, or an 8.2% increase. And considering our claims, that's not unreasonable. The other two options reduced our deductible on roof issues and eliminated the deductible for our student accident insurance claims. But the price increased somewhat with those. It went up $160,000 for option two and $364,000 for option three. So it's my recommendation that we go with option one.
Option one? Okay.
Option one being the 250s over the sports anyways.
Yes, and I've talked to Mr. Kidwell and Ms. Jessie about this and I'm going to contact Baycore to see if it's allowable for the school board to pay the 250 deductible instead of the parents. You got it?
And Ms. Lambert, on page 21. And I guess this kind of relates to what Mr. Kidwell just said about the student- Okay. Catastrophic.
Catastrophic. We have that policy at this time through Gerber Life. We've had it for a couple of years. That's to cover out-of-season and catastrophic claims for student accident. This is the first year that Baycore has offered this product. And I've told the representative that we have that rate or have that policy through Gerber and it's not due until February 1. So in December, January, we can ask Baycore for a price on it. But from just what I've looked at, it looks like their rates are just a little bit lower.
Baycore or Gerber?
Baycore.
August 4th, place one, place two.
Okay. Do we have a motion to renew the insurance coverage?
I make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Ms. Lambert, consider approval of payment appeals.
Are you happy to answer any questions?
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Next is reports and recommendations of the board. Anybody have any reports or recommendations?
I have.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Mr. Bricky for his time served here in the county and I wish him well in his retirement again. And with the selection of a new superintendent, let's focus on what's important and that is the education of our children. With everyone working together, we can make a good system even better.
Spanish.
Yes, I'd like to bring attention to Brooklyn Smith, senior Thomas Walker, signed with Tuscaloosa College on cross-country scholarship along with Tanner Redinger, signed with UVA Wise on cross-country scholarship. Proud of those that-
Mr. Kidwell, I don't know if you've been made aware, but we have a student here from Thomas Walker who plays first in the state forensics.
Yes, make us aware.
Dr. Smith, first place pros.
Would you like to stand and speak? No, with that being said, you know, the food grant thing, I don't think there's a soul up here that wants to see a kid go hungry, not at all. Miscommunication, maybe a lot of different things, but there's people in the building that not know that I have. I mean, I'll speak for myself. Hauled a lot of kids to ball games, bought them shoes, took them to the doctor, and a lot of different things. And by no means do we want to see people go hungry, so. And I never wanted to see it go through, really.
I've got one more thing, and I meant to say it earlier, about this is National Library Week. April 10th is 16th with the theme, I think, Libraries Transform. So you've got two days to read a book right quick.
Next is consideration of going into executive session. Do we have a motion?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion. We go into executive close session, consider actual probable litigation legal matters, Section 2.2-3711A7, student matters, Section 2.2-3711A2, and personnel section, 2.2-3711A1, of Dakota, Virginia.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye? Oppose? Now we're going to close executive session.